We're on record. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Persicent, Troy Hill, Board of Adjustment. It is Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Adequate notice is made, I'm sorry, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act.
Nora, we call, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz?
Yep.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick?
Here.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz?
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Would you please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance?
Aye.
I part with thee, the United States of America, and to the Republic, whose stand is one which is under law, in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on something other than it, than is what in, that is what on our agenda this evening? See none.
Okay, we're going to move on to correspondence. Correspondence received from Attorney Joseph O'Neill, requesting an extension of resolution approval for application 19:03, Zoom Auto Group, block 138.1, lot 1, for a period of one year from July 20, 2025 to July 20th, 2026.
Would you please call the roll for a vote?
Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Berkowitz, Jaskowitz?
Yep.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
And one other correspondence received from Attorney Mike Rugen, requesting an adjournment from tonight's scheduled hearing of application 2245, 199 New Road, block 770, lots 4 and 5, and be placed on the July 23rd, 2025 agenda with notice, and they also grant required extensions until July 31st, 2025.
Motion.
Can we have a second, please?
Second. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Grignani? Grignani?
Yes.
All right, and then, before we move into the agenda, we are-
Excuse me, Nora, we're not hearing you too well back here.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we are going to go through our resolutions, applications, 2470 Schwartz, application 2430 Amadi, and application 2480 Peterson. They can be approved by Berkowitz, the, across not here, Jaskowitz, and Grignani.
Motion.
Berkowitz, a second, please.
I move those resolutions.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yep.
Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, and our next resolution, 2471, last name Malik, 318 Holsey Road, Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, and Grignani again.
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, and Grignani.
Yes.
Aye.
And finally, application 2413, JOM3 Green Hill, we have Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, Quinn, and Grignani. Someone like to make a motion?
I move the, I move the resolution.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Good evening. Application 2416, Mohammed Zair, 24 Seminole Avenue, block 539, lot 9, zone R4, for a C variance to construct a front covered porch, left side additions, right side addition, rear covered porch, left side covered landing and stairs, relocate detached garage, driveway, front walk, rear balcony, and two AC units, contrary to section 430-35, column 10. Could you please come forward?
For the record, Mr. Willands is here.
Thank you.
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your names, spell your last name, starting with you.
Todd Koenig, I'm the architect, K-O-E-N-I-G.
Mohamed Sarif, I'm mortgage, A, M, N, T, E, P, A, R, L.
Okay, great, you can have a seat. Just make sure you speak into the microphone, okay? I think you were qualified as an architect the last time you were here. You still licensed?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
We've really covered most of that at the previous hearing.
Can you please pull the microphone closer?
Yeah, I, I actually listened to the tape earlier today. It looked like what happened was that you hadn't gotten the engineer's report before the meeting, and there were some concerns raised about stormwater management, and you asked for an opportunity to review that report and address those concerns.
Yes, and some of the concerns from managers you put, we have addressed, and a couple we're asking to take another look at. We are in a flood zone, which is one of the reasons we're up high.
Can you please pull the microphone closer?
Yeah, we're not hearing you. Sorry about that.
Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
We acknowledge the fact that we're going to need to come up with a stormwater management plan, which will probably involve detention, and we're going to sort of move a permit and a couple of other approvals that I mentioned in Mr. Willands' report.
Have you met with the township engineer about the stormwater management issues? Because that's what you asked, that's why you asked to carry it.
Unfortunately, our engineer is not here, which I don't know why, but I don't know if you've met with him or not.
Are you expecting your engineer tonight?
No.
No?
Do you know if you met with the town, with the engineer, with the town engineer?
I, he spoke to, yeah, he spoke to someone in the engineer here, and that's why he get the plan. And this-
What plan?
The engineering.
Is there a revised plan?
There's a architect, there's, there's your plan-
Yeah.
-who revised, but I don't know that any revised engineering plan-
Yeah, this is, I have it here. The one I have is the same one we looked at last time.
So, so it doesn't sound, I, I don't know what to tell you, but last time, like I said, I watched the tape this morning, and Mr. Chadwick had pointed out specifically that he hadn't seen an engineering report from the township quite as detailed as the July 2nd, 2024 report. And by detailed, I mean potentially costly.
Correct, I remember that.
Yeah, so you had asked for an opportunity to explore how you might satisfy the town engineer's concerns, that might be, that's the old one, before proceeding, and I don't know whether-
Apparently, apparently they did have a conversation. I haven't spoken, so I don't know.
Generally, what we'll get is a, a second report from the engineer indicating if there's anything outstanding or what has been resolved.
So it sounds, it sounds like nothing happened, though.
So, I think, I think the better thing is you ask to carry this. Somebody's got to get over and speak with the engineer and get a follow-up with that in writing. Otherwise, we're just going nowhere.
We're spinning no wheels.
No offense, but why wasn't that done? That was what was requested.
It was done.
What was done?
The engineering plan, whatever you asked on paper, so I give to my engineering, I needed everything.
But we don't have the-
Is there a new engineering plan? Is there a revised engineering plan?
Yeah, I give to Nora when I came, I, she asked for 16 tabbies, and I give to 16 tabbies.
Right, it's in January 9th, 2025, you all have that.
Is that an engineering report?
Yes.
That's Mr. Koenig's report. That's Mr. Koenig. Talking about this one?
That's mine. I know, I don't mind it. We're looking for the plan from Dykstra.
Yeah, you guys have the Dykstra plan as well.
We do. Yeah, I went to engineering and I picked up the plans from him, and it took him off.
Yeah, I have it.
But what we don't have is any kind of communication from the town's engineer or your engineer here to say, hey, we did all these things, we're in a, from last year.
I spoke to engineer, and he came here for the city hall, and he met with engineer, and that's, and based on what this was, he hit the plan.
But your, but your engineer's not here to testify that the concerns that were raised by the municipal engineer in this July 2nd, 2024 report have been satisfied. We're not engineers, we don't look at these plans. We rely on the testimony of your experts in order to consider your application. I mean, they're, these aren't engineers-
I understand, yeah, but I asked him if he has to come. He said, I don't have to be there. That's why.
If, if I may.
You might not have to be here, but your report has to be here.
But we have it.
We do?
If I may ask a question, the board apparently has a engineer's plan. The one I'm looking at was last revised 11/19/24.
That, that seems, yeah, that's-
That's the one you still have, so that-
That's certainly after the municipal engineer's report.
Yeah, but it's, it's the one we had at the last meeting is what I'm getting at.
We had the last meeting, I think it was-
It was last July, July 11th.
Yeah, July 10th. Yeah, July 10th was the last meeting.
So is this what we have, in theory, what was the plan that came up, that you came up, the engineers came up with?
Yes, this is what I talked, uh, less than two months.
Less than two months. Less than two months, oh.
Yes.
All right, so you're saying they, the town engineer and your engineer came up with this?
Yes.
But we don't have a letter saying anything, correct?
Yes. So I talked to him, and he said his tone in a, to the city hall, to, to meet up with engineer. So he told me, I based on what him and the engineer here explored, so we came up with this motion.
The problem you have is your engineer didn't follow through, even submitting or reporting to the board or requesting the town engineer to submit a revised letter based on the agreement, whatever they were. So you're caught in the middle. And the-
Once again.
The only alternative I could see that you could suggest to the board is approve this plan, revised plan, complying with the engineer's, township engineer's approval. Obviously, the risk is the same thing you had at the last meeting. You had no idea what the costs were going to be to address all of his concerns, and you're still in that pit.
Well, well, do you know what it's going to cost?
What?
This plan?
Did they give you any idea?
Did they tell you this is how much?
Yeah. Everything.
No, no. This, so what we're concerned about is the, the water issue.
The water, okay, yeah.
So the engineers came up with this plan?
Yes.
And you're, they told you how much it's going to be?
Yes, it's told, around 7,000 to 10,000.
And you're comfortable in if we were to approve this application with the stipulation Mr. Chadwick said, that the verbiage is-
Okay, all right.
That you agree to everything the town engineer requests, that's your burden now?
Yes.
Even though we don't have the report?
Right. I'm not sure we'll do that, but that's where, that's where we're at. Mr. Johnson?
I didn't make that, I want to make it clear, I did not make it as a recommendation.
Gotcha.
I think you should have the engineer's report-
Okay.
-on the revised plan.
You gotta listen to our professional.
Okay, so that's, that's issue one, okay? There's, there's another issue, and this, this comes down to your plans, okay? So it appears as though we might have two separate sets of architectural plans with the same date, but contain different items. It's my understanding that there is a set of architectural plans.
324, 3324.
Yeah, 3324. I'm assuming one of the package. I'm sure you have those with you, right?
I have them.
File January 9th. You go to January 9th filing date.
So if you look at A2, on that set of plans, you've got a proposed first floor plan, which has a kitchen in it, right?
Yes.
And you have a proposed second floor plan, which has a abbreviation, K-I-T, presumably potentially designating a kitchen. So one of the issues that came up the last time is that there was some concern, because you had testified that you were going to share this house with your, I think it was your father and his family, is that there is a potential for a second kitchen.
Yeah, the second kitchen, we'll, we remove it.
But it's still noted. It's still noted on-
So if you're going to come back anyways, I would suggest that we have one final revision date on a set of plans that does, that clearly does not include a kitchen-
Agreed.
-on the second floor.
Agreed.
Just to make sure there's no question later on that this board did not approve a second kitchen.
Understood and agreed.
Okay, with a, with its own unique revision date for that vast set of plans. So if you're going to come back anyways, I would suggest that you take care of that issue, too.
You may want to make an appointment with the town engineer, you personally. That way, I mean, these are not, we're not designing rockets here. We're just getting some water and just pipes. And sit down with him so you'll know what has been agreed to. Ask him if you could please put it right here, and we won't have to go through this again.
Nora, so we don't need his engineer, we'll just be okay with this?
It's up, I would suggest it's up to the applicant-
Yeah.
-as to whether he wants to bring his engineer the next time, just to make sure the board is comfortable with the revisions to the plans have satisfied the concerns of the municipal engineer.
Okay.
Hi, guys.
Nora, do you have a date to be carried, please?
June 11th.
June 11th?
Yes.
So you're going to grant the board all extensions through June 11th, correct?
And we don't have to renotice?
You do not have to renotice. We're trying to help you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm fine with that. Application 24:77, Rosalind Ironman, 52 Lawrence Road, block 288, lot 6, zone R4, for a C variance to install an air conditioning unit with pad, contrary to section 430-35, column, column, col, column 4.
Can you, I'll come forward. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, great. You can sit down. State your name, spell your last name, please.
Rosalind Ironman, E-Y-E-R-M-A-N.
And are you going to testify as well?
Possibly. My name's Peter Ziliotto, Z-I-L-I-O-T-T-O. I live with Rosalind at 52 Lawrence.
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, okay. So what would you like to do?
Uh, we had a, we placed our condenser, and we put it in the same spot that it was in place for 32 years.
Okay, same size?
Same size.
Just newer?
Yes.
More efficient?
Yes.
Quieter?
Yes.
Works?
Yes, yes.
Summer is coming.
Can we do that?
The minimis in nature.
The minimis in nature.
Frame of us.
Application 24-
Wait a minute.
Yep.
One sec. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
I, I have one question.
Don't ask questions?
You can ask a question, of course.
Well, it's a two-zone unit. Do we have to go through this again? Because the other one's 32 years old. Also, will this variance cover both of them?
No.
No, okay. So when the other one needs to be replaced, we'll get to come back.
You want to amend your application?
Do you want to amend the application?
To include both of the air conditioners?
Yes, yes. Please.
Are you putting in both?
We are not.
Not yet.
Not yet. But you're- But 32 years old.
Yes.
Okay, the, the, these approvals last for a year.
Okay, we'll take our chances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now wait, you're going to take your chance and go for approval of one unit or two?
One unit's already installed.
Okay.
So we need the variance for that. My question was, would it include the second one? Would it eventually go?
So do you want it to or not?
I do want it to.
Where's the second unit?
It's right next to the first one. It's right next to the first one, further away from the street.
But you don't know whether you're going to replace it in a year.
I do not.
So why don't you take the option of the board approving both of them? And if you don't, then you'll have to come back.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Mr. Willands?
Application 24:77, Rosalind Ironman, 52 Lawrence Road, block 288, lot 6, zone R4, recommending granting a C variance to install two air conditioning units with pad, contrary to section 430-35, column 4.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Willands?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Application will be memorialized, will be notified. I know I don't have that terminology correct, but.
Application 2472, Julio Ortiz, 170 Allentown Road, block 7276, lot 2, zone R4, C variance to install an air conditioning unit and legalize an air conditioning unit contrary to section 430-35, column 8. Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You can have a seat. Make sure you speak into the microphone. Please state your name, spell your last name.
Name is Julio Ortiz, O-R-T-I-Z.
What would you like to vote to now?
I have in house already two units, heating and cooling unit. And we decided to replace and all, one of all of them by 16 years old, and we realized that the other unit legalized, and the unit need approval from you guys, in that situation.
So you have one air conditioning unit that you replaced what was there with another unit, correct?
Uh, one we replaced.
One you already replaced?
Yes.
Okay, and that one you need to replace, correct?
No. The second one is already played from years ago when they build my second floor, and everything has been approved.
And now you're legalizing another air conditioner, is that correct?
Yeah, the second one I'm talking about. We don't legalize that one, second floor, and we want to replace one in the first floor.
Okay.
So if I understand it correctly, you already replaced one, and now you need to replace a second one?
Both have been replaced.
Both have been replaced, okay. So you need to legalize two AC units that have already been replaced?
Right.
Okay. Were they replaced in the same place?
Same house, yes.
Same size?
First floor and second floor. Second floor is a modern unit. Third floor is the same size unit than the old one. We have a central unit from the first day we purchased the house, a central unit, in the time, heating only. So they replaces, we replaced the heating and cooling with the same setup, the same construction, and that, that we never realized that we never got approval for, that are pretty record.
That's why you're here now.
I came today to let you know two units are replaced running, and both need to be legalized.
Okay, so they were in the same location?
Yes.
As before, same approximate size?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any questions for board? Any questions in the audience of testimony given by this gentleman? See none. Mr. Willands, Mr. Jaskowitz?
The minimis in nature, application 24:72, Julio Ortiz, 170 Allentown Road, block 276, lot 2, zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to install two air conditioning units and legalize an air conditioning unit contrary to section 430-35, column 8.
Actually, have to install through legalize.
Legalize, yes.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Willands?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, your application's been approved, it will be memorialized, and you'll be receiving a letter from Ms. Jolie, and at that time, if she comes to the board. Thank you. Application 24:67, Katan, 29 Lana Drive, block 734, dash 06, lot 8, zone PRD2, for a C variance to construct a sunroom, addition on a new second floor deck, landing stairs, and a concrete slab contrary to section 430-35, column 7. Mr. Katan?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Yes, I'm listening.
Oh, I missed that one. Okay, I missed that one. Sorry about that.
And sir, I assume you're going to be testifying. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name, miss, state your last name, please?
I'm Alex T. Bluth, B-R-A-T-I-M, S-P-A-Y.
And what is your relationship to the-
I'm confidential.
Okay, great. You can have a seat. Just make sure you use the microphone. Okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do?
So currently, I have a, a deck.
Would you please pull the microphone closer? Thank you.
So currently, I have this deck, and it's like 25 years old.
Would you please talk into the microphone?
Yeah. I have this deck that is about like 20, something years old, and that space, we haven't been really able to use it because of it's open, my little one is a little bit allergic to pollen, and we haven't been able to use the space as we would have liked it to. So I'm trying to make a sunroom instead of the deck, about the same size as the deck is.
So is the, so you're going to take off the existing deck?
Correct.
And build a new deck and, and put a sunroom on top of it?
Exactly.
Is that the plan?
Yes.
And, and remove those pavers?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's pavers that are, there's a paver patio, that's all going to be removed?
Yes, that was existing when I bought the home, but I, I found out when I applied that it was on easement or something as a part of this project. I'm willing to take that off.
Now, where is the landing?
Landing is on the side.
So are there, is there a landing and a stairs there now?
Yes, the stair right now is towards the back property. Instead of, I'm cutting that space off and putting landing on the side.
Oh, so you're removing the rear stairs and you're adding stairs on the side?
Right, so the backyard is actually going to be more than what it is right now, because I'm taking that space off.
Okay.
And the patio?
Right. Right.
I, I just have a question on our engineer's report talking about legalizing the increase in impervious coverage. I don't see that there's, you're asking for increase in impervious coverage, but anyway. Stormwater runoff. The applicant is required to address the increase in stormwater runoff. You've read that report from the engineer?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Letter dated January seventeen, twenty twenty-five for your application suggests that you were increasing stormwater, I mean, impervious coverage. I don't see that in very... Do you?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It can't be, they take the patio...
That's one thing. So I, okay. I just have a... Why do you say that?
I think you're looking at the incorrect application.
Okay. Never mind. I'll stay quiet.
I think you're looking at the incorrect application.
Are there any other questions from the board here? Any questions from the audience on the testimony that this gentleman has just given? Mr. Willens, your answer, you're satisfied?
Yes, I'm fine, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Berkowitz? Would you like to approve this? Frame work, please?
I'm a little confused. Is there two patios here? I couldn't hear the name. Oh, then I apologize.
2467.
I have no question.
Yes. Do you want me to do the resolution?
Frank, please.
Application 2467. The time of car, 29 Lana Drive, block 7834, Gash 0.06, lot 8, zone PRD, Gash 2. I would like to approve the C variance to construct a sunroom addition on a new second floor deck, landing stairs, and concrete slab contrary to section 430-35, column 7.
Motion, please? Is there a second? We need a second?
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Application's been approved. You'll be notified. At that time, you can come to the board. Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
And you.
Okay, so you skipped over 2476.
Yes, I did skip over that, and I apologize.
That's okay.
2476, Ahuya Ahir, and Milin Gomri, 11 Brandon Lane, block 73409, lot 18, zone PRD2. For a C variance to legalize driveway expansions, patio expansion, and pillars contrary to section 430-275H and section 430-35, column 13. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hands, please? You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your names and spell your last names, starting with you, ma'am.
Ahuya Ahir, A-H-E-R.
Ahir?
A-H-E-R, yes.
Gotcha. Can you pronounce your last name again, please?
Combre.
Combre? Great, thank you. You can have a seat, just make sure you use the microphone. And tell the board what you'd like to do.
Well, this is to legalize something that was done?
I believe that's the case.
Okay.
My question was, is it all constructed?
No. No, so first of all, our apologies, right? We did not know of this process, so as soon as we were made aware of it, we kind of stopped the construction, right? So it's partially done. We have, like, we stopped the work wherever, wherever it was.
So what's done?
So the pavers have been put, but they have not been sealed.
Is the driveway expansion completed?
We used to have an asphalt driveway which was, which was broken, and we need, we had to fix it. So we kind of took our neighbor's driveway as an inspiration, and we started putting the pavers on the driveway. And then when we heard that a township approval was needed, we submitted it for an approval, and then the work was stopped, right? So the asphalt is taken away, pavers have been put in place because we needed a space to park the car, but the pavers are not sealed.
So the entire asphalt driveway is gone, replaced with pavers both where the driveway existed and where you wanted to expand it?
Yes.
So those pavers are in, but they're just not sealed?
That's correct.
Is that the only work that's been done?
That is correct.
And the pillar, pillar is half done, so they started with the pillar as well. But the pillar are half done in the sense even, half is half, like, nothing has been completed there.
Okay, so those pillars, if I understand your plans correctly, there's pillars at the end of the driveway?
Yes.
Like one on each side of the driveway, is that right?
So our house is on a cul-de-sac, and it does not have lights in the neighborhood. It gets pretty dark at night. We have, we have kids and a dog, so we wanted to put something to add light at the end of the driveway to just create that additional visibility. So we constructed, we started constructing the pillars, like you said, we built it halfway, but then we stopped.
What are the pillars made out of?
They're hollow from the middle, and then they have blocks on the side.
So are they cement, are they, are they brick? What are they?
Brick.
Outside of...
Brick.
They're brick on the outside. What is your house made out of?
vinyl.
They've got vinyl ceilings, yes.
Okay. Now, besides the driveway and the pillars, I understand that there's some raised garden beds? Tell the board about the raised garden beds. Are those installed yet?
Yes, right, so we, we used to, so there, there was a section that we had plants on the sides of the driveway, and we have a dog who have a tendency of digging in the mulch. So, and, and she eats all kind of dirt from there. So we, I wanted to create something that would restrict her access to that, and in that process, I, I just raised the sides or the edges of the flower bed. But they're hollow from the inside.
Okay. So, you want to go, or you want me to?
No, go ahead.
I'll tell you for pillars.
Sorry?
How tall are the pillars going to be?
Two feet by two feet, so they're not tall.
The height, the height.
Oh, the height?
I think around, around three and a half, four feet.
I'll tell you exact...
You're going to put a light on top of them, right?
Thirty feet, uh, thirty inches.
Inches.
Pillars, so you have lighted driveway near the street, right?
Near the street.
And the light will be on the top of the pillars?
Yes.
So I'm slightly confused. Here it's saying thirty-two existing, allow twenty-four pose thirty-two. Okay, so you're kind of legalizing what, what you had. But, and then forty-one, forty, and forty-one is not, is minor. Now, what's confusing to me is in the engineer's letter, he's saying that there's going to be an increase in the stormwater situation. However, they took up the blacktop, they're putting down pavers, so it's actually going to be better.
I think they're going to seal them, I think.
Was that?
I think they said they were going to seal them.
So I was, I was home when the engineer came to actually take the pictures.
Yeah.
And he himself said that the variance is, is minor, and I should actually tell you that the flower beds are hollow from the inside. So it, the, the one-person variance is actually because they, they've been considered solid.
But the driveway, are you sealing it where water will not get through? Normally, pavers could have a...
They're going to grout.
Crowded.
You're going to grout the pavement. Before, it was all asphalt.
That's correct, yes.
You put in pavers.
Yes.
That should actually be better.
Always saying the grout will be impervious.
Okay.
It's a minimal...
Okay, so it's really dominus.
And you have, just, just to make sure the record is, is clear, because I just want to make sure.
Yep.
There's also another extension of your patio in the back, correct?
So, so when we, when we moved, the patio was of that size, but when we started looking at the records, because we wanted to submit it for approval, we realized that the size of the patio was not what was there on the record. So we, we used this opportunity to correct that size as well.
Okay, so when you bought the house, the patio had already been expanded?
Yes.
Not legalized, so you're not making any changes to that?
No.
No.
Okay.
And your neighbors have no problem with any water coming from you? Nothing?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't care, just one item. I noticed in the, that there is a discussion about an as-built survey in the engineer's report, which is, which is particularly important because the pillars cannot be in the, in the town right of way. And the town right of way is usually eight to ten feet behind the curb, so you have to make sure that those pillars are not too close to the, to the roadway.
Sure.
Where, where are they installed?
So...
Well, they're not finished yet, so you, if you need to correct them, you could...
Yes, we could pull them out.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can pull them out.
Okay.
Scott, this is you. Okay?
Do you have to ask if anyone has questions?
Yes, any questions from the audience of testimony that has been given? See you. Scott, would you like to frame a resolution, please?
Sure, I have the paperwork in front of me. I don't know what I do with it. Okay. Yeah, so this is, the dominus in nature, I'll be voting for it. So application 24, column 76, Ahuya, Ahir, and Milin Gomri, 11 Brandy, Brandon Lane, block 734.09, lot 18, zone PRD-2. Recommend granting a C variance to legalize a driveway expansion, patio expansion, and pillars contrary to section 430-275H and section 430-35, column 13. Do we need to say anything about the pillars not being in the right way?
Please.
Pillars not being in the right way.
An as-built survey to be submitted after completion.
Exactly as Mr. Johnson said.
And I will include those in the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Willens, second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Willens.
Yep.
Grignani.
Grignani, yes. Congratulations. You'll be notified when you can apply for your zoning purpose. Thank you, thank you.
Do you learn some stuff? Okay, enjoy your pleasure.
Thank you. Application 24, colon 75, Hockisham, 17 Cambridge Road, block 25, lot 40, zone R1. For a C variance to construct a single-family dwelling and steep slopes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Looks like you're going to get set up. You have a couple of witnesses?
We do, so...
Can you, yeah.
Can this one mark it?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. So my name is Adam Candil, civil engineer. We have our architect, and we have the planner as well.
Okay. Can you raise...
Should we all swear in one?
Yeah, sure, you're all going to, well, I could do you all as you come up and testify. So I guess you're going to take the lead?
Yeah.
Sure. Could you raise your right hand, please? You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name, spell your last name?
Yeah, Adam Candil, last name spelled K-A-N-D-I-L.
And what is your relationship to the project?
Civil engineer, professional licensed civil engineer.
Okay, have you been qualified by this board before?
I have.
And your license is still under standing?
Yes, it is.
And is the applicant here as well, just?
The applicant is here.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure that the board was aware as to whether the applicant was here or not.
Yeah.
Why don't you tell the board about the project?
Yeah. So essentially, we're looking to, to construct a single-family home. We're in front of this board for three reasons. So it's on an improved road, but we're here for three reasons, which is the minimum lot width, which is existing non-conformance, building height variance, both for the number of stories as well as the height, and a minimum front yard setback.
Do you need any variances with respect to the steep slopes portion of the order?
Yes, so that, that's the last one, so...
Okay.
We do have, we do need a variance for steep slopes, or critical slopes that are greater than twenty-five percent. And we are requiring, so we're proposing, we're proposing six thousand two hundred and four and point one five square feet, where four thousand six hundred and fifteen point two three is allowed as per our steep slopes analysis that was submitted to the board.
I think the board would probably find helpful a description of the contours associated with this lot.
Certainly. Yeah, so the, the site, and I'll go the grading plan, actually. This is the existing conditions plan. This is the existing conditions plan. This is Cambridge Road here. The site is entirely surrounded by single-family homes. There's, in the back, there's the rail, New Jersey Transit Rail, over about a hundred and twenty feet from the actual house in the rear. And the grade is, the high point is at Cambridge, and there's about a sixty-foot drop from the front of the site to the rear of the site. And we're proposing to keep the house as close as we can to the front of the, the road. This is the grading plan. So we're actually proposing to keep the house as much as we can to the front of the road for Cambridge, hence the front yard variance, so that we can minimize the disturbance on the, on the hill and down the, so to bring the, the, to bring the house as close as we can to the roadway, so we can gain access, and to minimize our disturbance of the steep slopes. So that's why we pulled the house up to the front.
And the lot's empty now, correct?
It's currently vacant, and I think part of it also, there was a previous approval, February nineteen, two thousand fourteen, for this very lot, for a house. In that proposal, the house was set back, all the way back by the tracks, and there was a series of like eight or nine different retaining walls. So that was approved for steep slopes, but it was much more aggressive than the plan that we're proposing today. Where we're minimizing the steep slopes and tucking the house much closer to the road, so we can gain access to the driveway. We do have a few, a couple retaining walls, and, and basically, the height variance that we have is because there's such a drop-off to the back of the house, where we go as per the ordinance, six feet away from the, each side of the house. That's where we trigger the, the height variance.
So if you were to pull up to the front of the house, you don't see a three-story house?
Yeah, and that would be...
Is that right?
Certainly, and that would be displayed on the architect's plan much better, and you can see that.
Yeah.
But yeah, you're looking at a one-story house when you look at it from the road. It's just where it drops off in the back, that's where the height, as per the ordinance, we're triggering those variances.
And how, what is the front yard setback?
Fifty foot, and we are providing thirty, we're providing thirty point eight.
Is that to the garage or the front of the house?
That is to, I'm going to go back to my site plan. It is, so the minimum setback is to the garage, which is right by the cul-de-sac.
Guess estimate of how far the actual house is? Another ten feet, fifteen feet?
Oh, gosh, it's going to be like twenty feet, isn't it?
No, it's kind of clean.
The house itself is probably another...
It's probably around fifty feet setback, the house itself.
The house itself, that's correct.
Which we can follow.
Slightly...
Is the fifty-foot setback on itself?
The corner of the house, I, I think is probably around forty, forty feet.
It's clocked to the road, anyway.
Correct. And in the neighborhood, when you're accessing or looking at it from the street, again, it'll be a single-family, a single-story house, like...
In terms of excavation, estimate of how much there is?
So the area that we're excavating, and, and this was also in the review letter, the excavation in this patio area is where we excavate the most, and we go down about four feet.
Four?
Four feet. And based off our geotech, we're not, we're not hitting any rock or any, any rock or boulders or anything. It's more or less fill in this area.
Are you removing soil from the site?
We, we are, we're, we're moving soil from the site, and we provide... We we are, uh, we're, we're moving soil from the site, and we provide our cut fill calculations, it's a total net cut fill of about fifty-six cubic yards that will be leaving, leaving the site.
So what's, what's beside this property?
Uh, the size of the property, it's a.
What's on the side?
The neighbors.
Oh, so you have, here you have a, a single-family home, single-family home, and then in the rear, you have the the rail railroad, if you go further beyond, you have fifty-three, which is way further beyond.
So the lots to either side of you, they're not flat, but they're not traditional.
They're.
The plateau kind of runs with the rail, isn't it?
Correct, and it really drops off as it goes down to the rail.
So the fact that it's a steep slope, it's really not affecting anybody, is that right?
No, and and also stormwater, we we provide stormwater management as per township ordinance, and fully containing it with a series of drywells.
Have you saw the township engineer's review letter?
Um.
The township engineer, I think it was a review letter.
I I don't, I don't.
That's something they should have mailed you for the applicant.
Yeah, I don't think we we saw it.
Here, uh, where's everyone?
Yeah, this is December eleventh, twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, hold on.
Oh, yeah, we, I saw this, this was just recommending for the soil moving, I did see that.
You okay with that?
Yes, we will comply with that. I do have a copy, I thought there was a a review of the site plan, sorry.
As far as yard space goes, there's obviously, there's not gonna be any front yard, there's not gonna be any front yard, basically, right?
Correct, and that's why they put in that, uh, the the double retaining wall, so they can have like a patio area in the back, so it's a, you'll have a walkout to that patio area between the two retaining walls, so that'll be essentially a a level area, and also to the left of the home, to the left of the garage, if you're looking at the garage to the left, is a a a level area as well.
The patio will be elevated for the first floor egress from the house in the back?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
But essentially, it'll be carved out in the middle here, and there'll be access from the house here, you can walk around the wall, but also from the building, there'll be direct access to that patio area.
Is this lot buildable unless you do it this way?
It's not, it's not buildable, it's not buildable unless you disturb the steep slopes.
Is this, in your opinion, is this the most efficient way to to build a lot?
Certainly, yeah, in my opinion, and I do have as an exhibit, the old plan showing that the whole site was completely disturbed, so, and that was previously approved in two thousand fourteen, where this is much less intensive.
To me, it's a very interesting design.
It's unusual.
Yeah.
Looks like your clients are happy.
Well, we'll see how the meeting goes.
Yeah. Did you see the sewer superintendent's report?
I I did, I saw the sewer and the water report, and we we will comply with those.
No problem with that?
Not a problem at all.
Mr. Lemanowicz, do you have any questions of this applicant?
Yes, manager, thank you, just a couple of questions on the limit of disturbance, which is obviously keys into the disturbance of the steep slope, how is that sanitary pipe gonna be installed? Um, so.
Where's it gonna go to?
So it's gonna go to the the thirty-foot easement, um, and that is something that, with regards to, and when we interact with the sewer erosion sediment control, I don't know if I have that. It'll be, it'll be excavated, and I doubt it'll be directionally drilled, so it'll be excavated, which I I think the limit of disturbance there would have to be increased. Well, that's what I was getting at, because based, I mean, this is a reduced plan, so I'm estimating off your graphic scale, you've only got about a three-foot wide disturbance there to put in. Yeah, maybe closer to eight foot wide. Right, and then also, as you, as you follow that service line from the main, the easement towards the house, when you approach the drywells, there is a little sliver of land in there that is, according to this, is not gonna be disturbed, which I think is a little impractical. Uh-huh. Um, also, the the limit of excavation comes right up to the, pretty much to the back of the house in a lot of areas, and again, digging a foundation, you need a machine, you got it to do footings, so I think your limit of of disturbance of the steep slopes is a little understated. Uh-huh. I just don't want, I just wanna make sure you get the variance that you need to do this. Yeah, I think, yeah, we would like to include what's needed for temporary disturbance in those areas, even though it'll be restored back to the existing grade, there might be incidental disturbances as needed to put in that sewer line to connect to the, to connect there, yeah, this area here. Yeah, we've accounted for about, about five feet here, but it may be closer to eight feet or so, depending on the machine.
You wanna make it eight feet?
Yeah.
So how does that affect the total disturbance area?
Um, it it's, it ultimately will probably be insignificant, it may be another, um, if I, if I had to guess, let me just look, um, based off, it's gonna be three times, if I have, let me get my scale, five back, yeah, sorry.
I just wanna make sure that the resolution accurately reflects what it is, should the board approve it?
I mean, the length of that pipe looks like it's sixty, seventy feet. Seventy feet long? Something, yeah, I'm estimating it because it's not a scale drawing. So let's say seventy feet by even ten feet, it would be about seven hundred square feet. So that's about a ten percent increase, because you're at sixty-two something now, aren't you? Yeah, I mean, we could, we can, I mean, we're at five, so three, we did three by, three by, um, three by seventy would be about two-ten, so maybe just say two-fifty. Three feet, that only gives you six feet wide. Well, we currently have five now. Not according to your plan, looks like maybe two or three, looking at the graphic scale and what I'm looking at. Yeah. So you're gonna need at least six feet to get any kind of machine of size in there. So that's four hundred and twenty, plus the sliver by the drywell, plus the stuff, you're probably pushing a thousand square feet more.
Again, the way there are variants. I mean, I would, I would say it's probably because I'm getting it about three, but the
length, the length I'm getting a little longer, though.
Maybe a way to move this along, instead of putting your scale up on that map, is, Tom, what do you think is probably a conservative estimate of increase?
Well, it's about seventy, we're talking, it's four hundred and twenty just from the lateral, you got that little piece between, that's probably five.
This is the percent of the twenty-five greatest slope, right?
You're saying to connect to the, that triangle between, right? Yeah, just forget about that little piece between. Yeah, just connect it. Now, the other thing, is there any way, right now, you've got the sanitary lateral coming out of the, more or less, the back corner of the house, if you bring it out of the front corner of the house, with the way the property lines are, your pipeline will be less, if you hit that, if you hit that sanitary line, the main closer to the road, by coming out of the front corner of the house. Mm-hmm. You eliminate, you'll shorten it by, looks like fifteen feet? Yeah, we we could, we could shift it to the front of the house over there, that that could work as well, we'd probably save, yeah, we'd save probably a good twenty feet. So I don't know how the board wants to handle the.
Well, it sounds like a good recommendation to me, if they're agreeing with it.
I mean, the other way is, I mean, and, you know, contractors are doing it more and more, we could directionally drill that to, to make that connection, especially down that slope, so.
Why not?
It's something that would be, huh?
Why not?
Yeah, yeah, it is something that we could do, but I just don't wanna make it a condition, I would.
Bill has gotta get a, a number in the resolution, and I asked Tom, what would you, give something that's.
I mean, in comparison to the other plan that was previously approved, we would like to just conservatively assume that we would excavate that, and 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 ask for the additional, with the understanding that if we can minimize it by directional drilling, we would also do that.
But they want a number for the addition, not just to say it's additional, come up with a number.
Yeah, I would say five hundred square feet additional.
Additional, other than what you.
Of what we're showing.
Plans, you're asking for, to amend that, to add an additional five hundred square feet?
That's correct, so rather than six, yeah, rather than the, um, the six thousand, um, what was the other number, six thousand two hundred and four, we would look for six thousand seven hundred and four.
Okay, are you comfortable with that?
I I think that's doable, and again, I think if you move that lateral up, it'll help you make that number. I I don't mind doing that as well. Directional drilling, I appreciate the offer, but you're on a steep slope, and that's, that's not gonna be easy. Yeah.
That, that would be a diminutive amount of increase to me, would be, from sixty-four hundred to, huh?
And is that, that's not getting moved out, that's just being disturbed, correct?
It's gonna be temporarily disturbed, and then.
Yeah, you're gonna go back.
It'll go right back, so it's not like we're changing the grade in that area, it'll just be going back to us.
Excuse me, Adam, I'm sorry, Mr. Candil, your planner will be here, he is here?
He is here, yes.
Okay, do you believe that he will concur with what has been discussed here?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Is that okay, my ear?
I think we need to hear his name or whatever.
Okay, when he gets up, okay. Mr. Lemanowicz, any more?
Nothing else, manager, thank you.
Questions? Okay.
Do you have any other testimony?
Uh, no.
Okay, who's up next?
Uh, the architect. All right.
Can you raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm with the testimony that you're about to give, should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing above it?
Yes, I do.
Great, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Uh, Avart Patel, A-A-V-A-R-T-P-A-T-E-L.
And you're an architect?
Uh, yes.
Madison, state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is true.
Testified before this board before?
Yes.
And you're the architect for this project?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna quickly walk through the different levels of the the floor plan, the structure is about three-story stall from the back, and, uh, this is the topmost level, which we are calling it a second floor plan, because we are entering at this level, and then we go down for other levels, due to the topography, um, this is the access point to the driveway, I mean, access point to the site, we have a two-car, um, parking garage, main entrance, um, small foyer, and then, um, living dining kitchen, more like an open living dining kitchen area here, one bedroom, bathroom, and then a a small pantry off of the kitchen, uh, we are proposing a, um, a deck here, and partially, the the deck would be covered with a roof over it, and then the rest would be open with the, with the staircase leading down to, um, the backyard or the side yard, that's the relatively flat area of the site, so that's why we kind of situated the, uh, the cover deck, and then the, uh, the backyard or the side yard, um, as you can see on this view, um, you know, this is more like a, uh, approach perspective, you know, and the, uh, looking at the front of the site, and, um, the garage, the main entry, uh, with a little wraparound porch, and then the main structure. The floor plan on the, on the left side of the page, that is the first floor, which is the level below, um, and that consists, uh, the additional bedrooms, um, as well as a couple of, uh, there's a small balcony on this side, and a, and a wraparound deck on that side, which is the, the lower tier, and I'll go through the arrangement of the decks on the, on the three-D views, um, but again, here we have one, two, three bedrooms, a small office space, um, and then two bathrooms.
How many square feet is the house?
Uh, the total square footage comes out to be, so the, uh, the second level is about twenty-six hundred square feet, which is, uh, the upper level, and, uh, the subsequent levels are about, uh, eighteen hundred square feet, eighteen hundred to nineteen hundred square feet.
Eight foot?
Yes.
The house is about five thousand square feet?
Correct, and, uh, you know, the, I mean, the, the size seems larger, but that was needed because of the site, uh, and and mainly, the, the bottommost level, which is, we're calling it a basement level, it is just the, uh, the open space with the utilities there, and and that was needed because, you know, we are building up from, uh, from the low grade there, and then gradually coming up.
No problem?
No elevator?
There is a, there is a small elevator proposed.
Okay. Let me see it.
Oh, I see, yes.
Um, it looks like there's a full floor, there's a full bath in the basement level?
Uh, yes, there is one.
Why is there a full bath in the basement?
Uh, just, you know, this is an open area, and if someone wants to use it, they don't have to go to the upper level, that's the only reason it's provided there.
So how many baths total, four baths in the house?
So we have one, two, three, and then one on the upper level, four baths.
So we're always concerned about, uh, two-family homes.
Multi-family.
Multi-family homes, and I guess that's, Mr. Johnson's getting at a little bit, in why a full bathroom in the basement?
Uh, again, as I said, you know, just the use point of view, uh, we are providing a bathroom, I mean, it's, there's no intention of of splitting it into a, a second dwelling, but, uh, so people don't have to go up or down, you know, that's just a point of view step of, uh.
Could you make it a half bath?
Yeah, sure, we can, absolutely.
Powder. Yeah, I think that would probably make us a little more comfortable.
Yeah.
Right, David?
Yep.
And again, the, the way the house is situated, uh, you know, let's say if this happens, you know, to two families that situation, again, the access point is through the main staircase, you know, it's only one point of access.
Your intentions are clear, but it's the.
No, I get it, I get it, absolutely.
Yeah.
These are the, uh, the building elevations, the one up top is the, uh, the frontal view, um, this is the, the rear elevation, which kind of depicts the, uh, the height of the structure, the three, four, three stories, uh, plus, uh, a base, and that's due to the the, the topography of the site, um, this is the, uh, the elevation, looking at the, the back of the garage, uh, the side yard, and then, uh, two-tiered deck over here, one access from the, the living dining area on the second floor, and then the bedroom level at the, um, at the first floor, um, as you can see some of the balconies and the decks on the rear elevation as well, and these are the, uh, some of the three-D views based on, uh, the current topography and how the wall structures would be played out.
What's the siding, is it hardy plank or?
Uh, yeah, so the base would be, uh, some sort of, uh, masonry material, culture stone, and then up top, uh, we're gonna go with the, with the hardy siding, hardy siding, it would be a combination of, uh, hardy, uh, woodlook siding, little, something little more.
So John, is. So John, is the bathroom becoming a patamar overkill if they can't really do anything with that?
Yeah, I was going to say, why, what about it? They want a full bath in the upstairs.
Yeah, let it be.
Okay.
What is the board saying?
We're saying why, why-
Want to change, want to change to a powder room?
They don't have a second, they don't have a second outside entrance of the-
The terrain probably prevents it anyway, so knock yourself out.
And particularly a guy in his eighties, I'd rather go downstairs and go up three, five steps anyway.
Would you rather be in the elevator?
Yeah.
Well, I'd take the elevator, yeah.
I see that the open hall on that basement level is approximately two thousand square feet.
Yes, it is. And as I said, you know, the whole reason is, you know, the grade over here, so we have to build that regardless in order to support the house, so, you know, it's a-
Use it.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions of the board?
Thank you.
Any questions in the audience, testimony? Nope.
Some beautiful house.
Planner? Okay, I have a question, and I mentioned it to John.
What do we need him for?
This is thirty-eight DeCrosse Court.
Raise your right hand, if you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth.
I am.
State your name and spell your last name.
Matthew Flynn, F-L-Y-N-N.
Certified professional planner?
I am, I have my professional planner's license, my AICP license, I testified before this board, and many others.
Would you agree with the testimony that you've heard so far in terms of any planning issues?
I, I agree.
Do you have anything in particular that you want to say?
That's a good question. Um, no, I mean, really, the, the essence of my testimony was really just going to get, this is a substantially conforming project, we comply with impervious coverage, most of our setbacks, and really the point of all of this was to bring the building as close as possible away from those slopes in the back, bringing it as close as possible to the street, which is a vast improvement over what was originally approved. And really with that, I think this is, like was already mentioned, the most efficient and productive use of the property that we can get, given the constraints of the site. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to walk the board through anything else.
None for me.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the audience, testimony just given, see none?
I think maybe just to be safe, what I will say is I think we're going to just rely on the C-two balancing test, the benefits substantially outweigh any potential adjustments, just to put that on there.
Sure, just to put on the record, sure.
All right.
There is a question of the applicant himself.
Yep.
And I, I don't want to butcher your last name, is it, could you pronounce it for me?
Ervadiya.
Yeah, could you come forward, please?
Sure.
Can you raise your right hand, please, to swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above it? Okay, so state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Harkison Ervadiya, first name, H-A-R-K-I-S-H-A-N, last name Ervadiya, A-E-R-V-A-D-I-Y-A.
Okay, so the question was, on the application, you list your address as thirty-eight DeCrosse Court,
Yes.
and the, the location of the property is fifteen Cambridge Road.
Correct.
Is it your intention to move into the property, is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that was, that was a question that I asked the attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Great, thank you very-
And your family's going to be moving with you, so.
Yes, I have a two-and-a-half-month-old kids, so, and another four-year-old, so.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions of the board?
Nope.
Nope.
Would one of our board members like to frame a resolution, please?
Sure, I think it's a, a really nice-looking project.
It's an unusual, an unusual project.
It's different, but it seems like it makes total sense for the property, in good taste, and not affecting anybody, so I'll be voting for it.
I support that, the only, the only thing I would ask is, when you have a cocktail party on that outside patio, when the train comes by, let me know, okay?
Application twenty-four, call in seventy-five, Harkison Ervadiya, fifteen Cambridge Road, lot twenty-five, lot forty, zone R-one, recommend granting a C-variance, construct a single-family dwelling and steep slopes, do I need to add anything else?
Well, there's the world. There's three variances, correct? Just to make sure the record's clear, there's the variance from the steep slope, the critical slope disturbances, there's the height variance for the-
Three-story.
The, the height of the building, there's a variance for the stories of the building, and there's a front yard setback variance, correct? That's everything, right?
Yep. Oh, the modification on the lot, yeah.
Right, existing non-conforming on the lot. Have I covered everything?
Yep.
Okay.
As Mr. Johnson has said.
Second, Melissa.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Nusselitz.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Willing.
Yep.
Bernani. Yes. Application is approved, you will be notified by our secretary when you can apply for the purchase. Very unusual home, and we wish you much, much happiness. Good job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very unusual home, you all, you better call everyone for the party.
Oh, Nora has something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, continue. Um, if, I put out an email for additional dates and special meetings, I need everyone to respond, if anyone has something to say.
Coming up. May twenty-eighth, uh, I said.
I think we, I think we, May twenty-eighth seems to be most, the date that most of the, just the, the end year, I have a problem, maybe we can go back. Okay.
At the high, the high school.
High school, April first, yeah, okay. Bye, Adam. Isn't that it? Nora, our next meeting, Nora, our next meeting is April first, April second at the high school. Okay, thank you.
That's the tip? Lucky you don't get paid by your work. You say that power of testing.
Congratulations, congratulations, beautiful home.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, Laura.
Move to adjourn a minute?